It's recording. No, it's recording, yeah. All right, now we're recording, sorry. Linda, Maggie is here, Marcia, Robert Strapp and John Lackey from LaGrande, Erin Wells, and Brent.
We also have Mary, she indicated on the chat to add her to the roll call.
All righty.
And I believe I'm now the voting, one of the voting members, Marie Baldo from Hermiston.
And Debbie Lind from Lao is on, but I do not know why she's not showing.
Hermiston Public Library.
All right. And who was another person?
Debbie Lind, she's one of the members up above line seven.
I've got her, okay. All right, I think that just about covers it.
Yeah, Noel is here.
All righty. All right, well, let's jump in and get started. Do we have any additions, deletions from the agenda?
I noticed the date is incorrect. Oh, I'm sorry, not the agenda.
Oh, the datum, date on the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
All righty.
There is an agenda addition. Buzzy emailed and asked that we, under new business, look at changing permissions, allowing library staff to edit other libraries patrons for things like address, contact information, that kind of thing.
Right, I've got it down here under the new business on.
Okay, great.
On my minutes here.
Okay.
Rich, take a vote on that. All righty, so the approval of the July minutes?
The date should be the 21st of July instead of the 7th. And on page two, under point number two, cataloging committee, there is an extra word in there, Karen shouldn't be there, I don't think.
Okay, I've got that change, I'll make those and correct it on the web.
Okay, great, thank you, Beth. Do we have a motion for that in the second?
So with those changes, I'll move to approve the minutes from the July meeting.
I'll second it.
All righty. So moved, so next item up is the open forum for the general membership and we will turn this over to the LaGrande visitors.
Well, thank you, we really appreciate the opportunity to visit with you this morning. Just in, just a little bit of background for everybody, the city of LaGrande operates a library that is essentially a county library, largest facility in Union County. One of the concerns that we've always had is the inequity in terms of the funding by the city residents of what is essentially a county asset, about $400,000 a year operation. The county provides about $20,000 a year of direct financial support. And we currently, in the community cities in Oregon, are struggling to balance our general funds, we have more dollars going out the door than we have coming in currently. Now, our city council and our full budget committee have been working together to look at a variety of options for trying to address this. And one of the topics that came up was, shouldn't we be charging a user fee for our library in addition to property taxes that we collect? And should that user fee be charged to just non-residents? Should it be charged to residents and non-residents? And so that's been kind of the discussion. The state library sent out a letter to us last week that surprised us a little bit that indicates that we actually can't charge a user fee because that would essentially deny access to folks that can't afford to. And Mary Kay Dolgreen, in her letter, quoted the applicable ORSs. So I guess our base question to the collective group is, are there any suggestions, ideas that you guys would have for us on how we might be able to bring some additional revenues in for our library? And are there any libraries that are currently collecting user fees of this kind that we might be able to touch base with to see exactly how those are structured? So that's kind of the framework for our conversation. Council Lackey is here and I think will correct me if I screwed any of that kind of overview up. And our agenda would be to kind of carry back the information we get from you to our next meeting, which is this coming Monday night. And a hush falls over the crowd.
Well, I was waiting for Councilman Lackey to jump in if he wanted.
It's been clearly stated, appreciate the opportunity. Well, we're open to any ideas, obviously. And it's quite a dilemma because it's probably the single largest segment of our overall budget that is upside down. And to try, the only option that I see is if we can get the county to pay their proportionate share, but we have no means to bring them to the table to do that. So we're just open to any suggestions anyone might have. Go ahead.
So, this is Buzzy, I'm at Hood River County Library District. So we're a little bit different kind of library than you in that we're a special district, but it is fairly common, and we do this as well, to charge fees for non-residents. So if we have, we have some reciprocal agreements with other libraries where we actually do allow their residents to get free cards, but if somebody from, right, from the city of Mosher comes to our library, we charge them a fee that's roughly based on the median value somebody would pay in taxes to support our library district. And we're not alone in that, it's incredibly common that libraries do that. I can't really, I don't know about other libraries, I can't really say for us, this is like a massive revenue source because it's really not. But it is typical. But again, it would be, it's typically for non-residents, under the idea that your residents are paying taxes to support the library already.
Thank you.
Buzzy, by residents, do you mean citizens within Hood River? Or are you talking county or city?
Well, we're, we are, our service population is the whole county. So for us, it would be permanent resident of Hood River County. Again, we have some reciprocal agreements with other counties that allow their people to get free cards in our library, but that's probably beyond the scope of this particular discussion.
And hi, this is Marie Baldo, pardon me, from Hermiston. We are also an independent library. We work with a special library district here in Umatilla County. And they pay us to provide support for their citizens within our, within our service area. But it's significantly more than apparently the county is paying to your, to your system right now. And we basically look at a proportion of the taxes and that's how we divide and number of people in that area, and that's how we divide it up. Also, as a border county, we would not charge any out-of-district fees for our sister counties or our sister Sage members, but we do charge if somebody comes from St. Patterson over in the tri-cities. And we do the same thing as Buzzy and Hood River, we kind of determine how much, how much it would cost the county or the city in tax fees to support a single user, and then that's what we charge out-of-district people.
Which jurisdiction is paying you guys to provide the service?
It's the Umatilla County Special Library District. When the county created the library district, the city of Hermiston remained independent. And so our city library is actually funded from the general fund.
Okay.
But I would say probably 25% roughly of our budget is provided by the Special Library District under a memorandum of understanding that we have with them.
Okay.
And just to clarify, Marie, that's because residents of Umatilla County, several residents of Umatilla County live much closer to Hermiston than to other libraries.
They're within our service area, yeah, within the state designated service area for the city.
Got it.
Sounds like you guys had better negotiators.
You know, I'm kind of at a loss, because this is John Schofer from Columbia-Gorge Community College, and I'm from the academic side, so I really don't have a whole lot to weigh in on the public side of this. But it seems to me that trying to generate revenue to run your library through out-of-residence fees is just not going to.
The sound is totally gone.
It's just not going to cut it.
There actually is, this is Buzzy again, there actually is some data from libraries, I don't think any of them are from Oregon, maybe a few are, but there is data from libraries that have started to charge fees. I mean, these are libraries in like other states that don't have the same requirements as Oregon, that have tried to charge fees, and what they find is that the number of people using their library goes down quite a bit, and the projections for the revenue from those fees is quite a bit lower than projected.
Buzzy, do you know where to find that data, or do you know?
I don't, I can try to, I can try to figure it out.
I wonder if that is something Mary Kay could help us with?
Yeah, I think she could.
Or help Terry and Robert with. So I don't, I don't know, Robert, it sounds to me like trying to raise revenue through your library is not optimum. And I don't, I don't know where to take this discussion beyond that, without, especially without Terry being here.
Right, okay.
Well, and I guess one, one thing to consider, there are a lot of cities that have been faced in the same situations, and it's, I mean, it's tough to compare your departments, it's like choosing between your children, I'm sure, but libraries kind of end up in a challenging cross because they're not in, perceived as being as immediate a service need as, say, a police department.
This is Ann, it is, and I am in the middle of a conference call, did you get my message from last night?
Ann!
Okay, yeah, so my name is misspelled on the paperwork, so I really don't want to sign it.
Ann.
You can resend it to me, but.
Yeah. All right.
Sorry about that.
So libraries aren't perceived as being quite as immediate need as, say, a police department or a fire department, but they serve a really important preventative role. So if libraries are doing their jobs, ideally, you know, children are getting, are prepared to go to school, they're getting better educations. So it's a, they're really good long-term investment, but you know, if you're in like a short-term budget crisis, it's hard to balance it. But our roles are really long-term, like for a lot of our programs, like our story times, we don't necessarily see the benefits of doing that for years.
Are there any of you up there that have constrained services or cut hours or done other things to self-maintain a balanced budget?
I mean.
Hi, this is Marie from Hermiston again. Sorry, Buzzy, I didn't mean to run over you.
No, go ahead.
Back in 2008, the city of Hermiston, we really, we were told as department chiefs to reduce our budgets by around 20%. And we did that across the board, and I'm talking about general fund budget or departments. And I thought that the city was rather brave in that they did do it across the board. I mean, everybody took 20% to include the police department and other departments. And we really worked hard to make those budget reductions and got there. And one of the things the city manager told me, which actually proved to be true, he said, "I'm not so much worried about the library because you guys are good at begging." And so, he was right. And we have come back today, but I really appreciated the fact that we all took the hits. And I realize that's not always possible, but we, we did everything to make, to include the bottled water disappeared, we made all kinds of changes to reduce that budget, and we're sitting pretty good today.
Thank you.
This is Buzzy, and again, we're a different type of entity, but just a little bit of history of us, we actually used to be a county-run library, we were a county department of Hood River County. And we were closed for a year because of some pretty drastic budget cuts on their end, and we reopened a year later under, as a special district, so as a completely independent library. But our taxing rate is fairly low, especially compared to like the years when the library and the county was pretty well-supported due to some timber funds. So we actually have had to, this is right from our start, we opened four years ago, we've had to implement, we've had to do things to make sure that we're being financially responsible. And so one of those things is, we operate three branches, our biggest branch is Hood River, and then we have two branches in two other smaller communities. Our Hood River branch is only open 43 hours a week, and our other two branches are only open 20 hours a week. And that's part of what we had to do to make sure that we were able to, we were able to operate within the limits of our tax base. And you know, there are other little nitpicky things we've done too, as well, but I mean, that's, open hours are a big driver of it.
Okay. Well, we'll now take a bit more of your meeting time, we really very much appreciate the information that you guys have shared. And it sounds like our next step is to have a little bit more of a discussion with the county, and also to get some clarification on whether or not we can charge these user fees to the non-residents in light of the fact that the county does provide us so nominal financial support. So thanks so much for allowing us to jump onto your agenda, and appreciate being a member of Sage, it's, I think it's a really good situation for all of us. And so we'll jump off the call at this time.
All right, well, thank you, Robert, thank you, John.
Thank you, Spex.
Okay, with that, we will move on to reports.
Sage staff. Okay, this is Beth, reporting that Brent and I are tackling quite a bit of cleanup in the system, also doing site visits. I'm going to be sending out bills soon for Sage membership fees, so be looking for those in your email. Also, good news, North Powder Public Library has made the decision to become a full circulating member, so they will transition from a resource-sharing partner to having, doing everything, being automated on the system. So that will be a nice, nice move forward. Brent, do you want to share anything?
Yeah, sure. I've started through a Linux kind of training course, it's kind of familiar.
Guys, quiet down a little bit.
Oh. I think that was Ann talking to her students.
Oh. Okay, so I started a Linux administration training course to kind of better understand the, the systems we have over at EOU, which will hand in a certificate as well. And I've been working with the system staff over there as well to make sure that we're just kind of on the same page. And I've been running virtual upgrades on virtual machines to our servers to make sure that if anything happens, Beth and I both are in a situation where we can, we've done a dry run of it so that if something happens, we'll be prepared. We've worked on the custom kind of Sage templates for the catalog so that now patrons, when they see that need help button in the catalog main page, it'll direct to the sage lib.org kind of help page for patrons that has some general question answers about renewing, setting up an online account, as well as the help form if they have some additional Let's see, I've also worked on the staff section, which is the sage lib.org/help. There's a whole new footer section there with, with a lot of additional help documents and a kind of, I don't know, whatever Green's doing type page, or that I'm kind of filling with strange, strange issues you might encounter, such as duplicate icons, or maybe some strange error messages that you encounter. And then, yeah, I've been working on the cleanup project with Beth as well, it's been pretty big.
Excellent, thank you, Brent. Beth, is this, is that it?
Yeah, I think, I think that's good unless anybody has any questions.
All right, moving on to cataloging committee?
Hi, this is Sarah Samuels, and the cataloger at Hood River County Library, and one of the chairs in the cataloging committee. We've, let's see, it's been fairly quiet, we've been working with David on the training he's doing, I mean, he's, he's been doing a lot of training and just, and reporting to us, kind of making requests on what people need, so it's usually a combination, it's been a combination of regional trainings where he's on, and he gives like tip of the week, and, but then also offers one-on-one help, so, and that's been very helpful. We've started discussing again qualifications for moving catalogers from level two to level one, which would just be full, full cataloging permissions, so creating new records and things. In general, we're trying to structure it so, just to keep the catalog really consistent and improve the quality of records in general. Let's see, we've been, we're discussing relevancy rankings, so what, when you do a search in the catalog, what moves, why some records are at the top and why they're not, you know, what, how that order is determined. And if, if people have input about what they'd like to see, that would be very helpful. Or if you've, you've run across things that rankings have surprised you, or it don't seem to make sense, to let us know, because Beth is working on that mostly, but we've been talking about it at the meetings. Also updating the catalog manual to include RDA, David's been doing a lot of work on that. And, and just in general, move to the new website and getting to know the resources there. And finally, it's time for a new chair for the cataloging committee, so if anyone is interested or knows someone at their library who's interested, please refer them to me or anyone on the committee or Beth, that would be very, very helpful, thank you. Are there any questions?
Nope, all right, thank you much.
Thank you.
Circulation committee seems to still be inactive. Courier committee, Beth, do you have anything?
Yeah, the courier committee met, and we discussed our ILL labels, trying to figure out ways to cut costs. I proposed moving to a smaller label, so I'll be sending out an email about that. Some libraries are already using half of the current ILL label, and so it's not going to be much of a change for them, but it can reduce our costs quite a bit if we can get more labels.
Are you talking about the stickers that we put on, on the face of the book?
Yes, yes, the stickers that are on the face of the book proposing to move that to a smaller size, since we don't need to put a lot on that label. So discussion has started on that. The other thing that we're.
Can I, can I just mention something, Beth?
Yes, please.
Did we just get rid of those?
You know, that has been brought up before, and it is, we can enter that discussion again. It is useful as a way to identify a book that belongs to another library very visibly. Plus, it helps, I think, with courier logistics when something isn't, if the bag isn't labeled correctly, or.
Or falls out of the truck or something.
Yeah, um, but I don't think we need a ton of information, in fact, I was thinking, well, do we really need the due date on there because, you know, that's assigned at checkout So I guess we could open it up to discussion. I think they're still useful.
Okay, I just had to throw that out there once again, so you didn't miss it this year.
I mean, the other, the other thing that you might run into is, if libraries don't have that, then they might end up like printing out receipts instead, so like, are we really saving any, anything in the long run?
Right.
Yeah. So I guess, I figure going to a smaller label and cutting our costs that way initially, and then if we still need to cut costs further, we can look at ways to eliminate them altogether. The other thing that the courier committee is looking at is updating courier guidelines and instructions, because it's been a while since they were written, things have changed slightly in this, so we're going to do a rework of that and have people review, review that to make sure that we've caught everything and that they're easy to understand.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Development committee seems to still be inactive. Governance committee?
Hey, it's Marie, we still have some life left in us.
All righty.
I though admit, have not called a meeting since the last Sage meeting, and I think Beth has proceeded pretty well with the Harney County and the plan of action that we had developed earlier. But I will call a meeting prior to the next Sage council meeting so that we can formulate and get something for the council's approval as a standard.
Okay, great. Which moves us right into previous business and the Harney County question.
Yeah, I apologize for putting action at the end of that, I copied and pasted from the previous agenda, there really isn't an action needed. There was a vote taken, and the new membership request for the Harney County schools was approved, so we'll be moving forward and bringing them into the Sage library system.
Excellent.
Pretty excited.
Excellent, so I guess there's no discussion needed for that.
Correct, yes.
Excellent, okay. The Sage council office.
Can we get some updates still on that?
Pardon me?
Could we get some updates on that?
Could we get some updates on that, though? So we kind of just know what's going on?
Yeah, things are at very preliminary stages. I am putting together that cost document based upon the guidelines that we came up with through the governance committee, so I'll be sending that out. And then I'm going to be meeting with Cheryl, hopefully next week, to gather more information about the libraries and figure out timelines. Did you have specific questions, Dea?
No, we just, when we were given the vote, there were a lot of pieces that were really kind of unanswered in my mind, and so it was just helpful to have an update.
Okay. Yeah, this is our first set of libraries coming in with, under a new philosophy of, you know, assessing a member fee, and what does that member fee, you know, compose of. So I think going forward, it's going to be much easier. When I did a site visit to the enterprise area, Janine had a great idea of putting together a new member document, or a member document in general, that kind of talks about policies, and I think that would be really helpful, just to kind of give us a more cohesive membership kind of package for people coming in, so they're not broadsided by things that they didn't know coming in. So I'm going to start working on that as well.
Beth, are we hiring somebody to do the import of the records into the system?
I don't know what you mean by, no, I'll be doing the import, but some of the libraries are not automated, so their records are actually going to go probably to an outside vendor, such as Archive or Backstage, to make sure that they are adequate.
I guess my question is, do you feel confident that we're not going to end up with a lot of duplicate records in the import, kind of like what happened with Gorglink?
Yeah, I do, I feel like there has been a lot of progress made in the Evergreen software to prevent that with record matching and also criteria for merging that wasn't really in place when we brought the gorge records in.
Thanks.
So that will take us up to what, 82? How many libraries, 79? I don't know, okay. Sage Council Officers Vote. Unfortunately, I don't have that information, did you get that information from Perry, Beth?
Actually, the Sage Council Officers, I just brought this forward, just so we didn't forget about it, but the last meeting, we didn't really, we didn't have any volunteers for chair, and, you know, annually, we just, you know, do this reelection of officers, not, not the people on the council themselves, but, you know, who's going to take the minutes, who's vice chair, those kinds of things.
Right.
So I don't know that we need to do anything this meeting, and can't really, but I think we need to think about it, or at least say, okay, you know, we don't have any volunteers, we're just going to keep with the same officers for next year.
Was it the problem, though, that Perry couldn't do it? I frankly don't have the time to do it, Buzzy is always the default, so.
I'm not on the council anymore.
So.
Yeah.
So we need to encourage coerc, collude, somebody else to step up?
Well, and I would also say Perry is, Perry has a lot of work he has to do for Sage as a result of being the administrative agent.
Right.
And I actually really don't think it's fair for him to have to be president.
Right.
It isn't, and so we really need somebody else to step forward, and I did talk to Perry about, you know, trying to sweeten the deal with, I will take care of agenda and the meeting packets, basically, maybe all the chair would have to do is kind of run the meetings, so.
I hope he didn't do this when I was chair.
You know, Buzzy, you didn't seem to need it, but you know, if you come chair again, I'll be willing to do it for you.
This is Marie, we, we used to take turns doing this, and.
We did.
I really would recommend that it not be the same people over and over again. We have new, new people in some of the major libraries or on the council that need to step forward and get the experience. And as being somebody that's about to retire.
I'll tell that to Jeff next time I see him.
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be the library, it needs, it just, somebody needs to have the experience, and it is an experience.
And I will try to facilitate it as much as possible, so that was the main reason I put it on this agenda, was just to kind of say, hey, we can't forget about this, you know, Perry doesn't need to be chair for another year.
Perry's done it twice.
Yeah, he has, yeah. So just trying to spread the word and, and see if we can get some movement on that by next meeting.
Okay. All right. All right. New business, we have Buzzy and restriction to patron records.
So it actually has to do with more than just patron records, it actually, more has to do with item records. So we, there's a lot of cross-pollination between our library and the DAOs, and so we run into situations fairly regularly where we have in other libraries patrons that are using our facilities, or just our patrons who have checked out materials from other libraries. I think that now we actually can edit address information, is that correct?
For patrons, yeah.
Yeah, so we actually can edit the address information, but what we run into is, we can't really edit certain parts of the item. So just to give you an example that comes up fairly regularly, like, we'll have a patron, like, last week, we had a patron who left an item from another library, they went on vacation, and they had an item from another library, and they left the item wherever they were on vacation, and they wanted to pay for it. We can't mark another items, another library's items as lost, manually, a market is lost by the patron. So we had a patron at our desk, willing to pay for the item, and we couldn't mark it as lost, because we were restricted from being able to mark them. And we've run into situations, same thing, where if we have a patron that returns an item, the library's item that's really damaged, we can't mark it as damaged, so we don't know how much it's going to cost them. There's things like that that we run into, where it would be helpful if our circlagens at least had the ability to change the status of an item.
Yeah, that seems kind of strange that we can't do that, just for the item status for something like that.
Right, or like we can't mark something as missing, you know, just little things like that.
Yeah, it's certainly easy enough to change, this is Beth, so if everybody's fine with it, we can make those adjustments to a consortium level. As far as status changes, are there any other things?
That was the big one. We did run into problems when we couldn't update patron records, just because we'd have, you know, patrons from the DAOs, like, hey, can you update, or my email address? And be like, uh, no, unfortunately, we can't. But that, that problem has been fixed, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
So do we need to make a motion to, to change the consortium level status editing for items?
For, for other than items, we want to make the, change the items.
Yeah, I think Ryan's asking if we want to make it formal.
Yeah.
Sure, I think so, I mean, yeah, so do we have a motion in a second?
Sure, I'll motion.
And this is Marie, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, do we need to take a vote, and how do we?
Yes, may I take a vote?
Yes, we do need to take a vote. So can we get some confirmation either through voice or clack your hands on the?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye?
Aye, aye.
Okay, dealey approves, okay, I think that passes, and Brett will fix it as we sit here.
Way to put Brent on the spot.
So moved. Thank you all. Agenda items for next meeting? Besides finding a chair and a vice chair?
This is an agenda item for next meeting, but I just wanted to say, like, things in Sage have been going really smoothly lately, it's been awesome, and I know a lot of it's because of Beth and Brett, but a lot of it's just like, seem to have our stuff down, which is great, because there are times when it feels like we didn't, so I think it's been going fantastic.
Yeah, I'll second that. All right, we'll send in your agenda items for next meeting, since none have spoken up, and thank you all, it's 10:44, and we are adjourned.
Good job, John, thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks.